The Chair notes the time at six o'clock. I call this meeting of the Amherst Zoning Board of Appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge. As ZBA Chair, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of the ZBA members and panel for tonight's meeting. Steve Judge is present, Mr. Craig Meadows. Mr. Everold Henry. Can you, anybody, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Everold.
I can hear you.
I think everyone froze, I'm sorry.
Oh. Henry present. Present and Mr. Meadows, are you present? I think I didn't hear you. Okay, but I can't hear you, that's funny.
Yeah, your microphone, Craig, is muted, sorry. Continue.
Ms. Marshall?
I'm here.
And this is Ms. Greenbaum?
I'm here.
All right. The quorum is present. Also tonight, attending tonight's public hearing is Mr. Rob Mora, Building Commissioner, and Mr. Rob Wachilla, Planner for the Town. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote meetings. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. The Board of Appeals is the, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the statute. Um, I, um, my printer didn't print up my normal.
Oh dear.
That's okay, I've got it. Um, virtually.
Mem- memorized.
Electronically here, yeah. And I should have it by memory after all these years, but, um, yes, here we go. According to the provisions of Chapters, of provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and noticed thereof and posted and mailed to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are open to and are recorded by town staff and may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and ZDA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the Chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen or by pressing pound nine on their phone. The Chair, with the assistance of the staff, will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed to the board. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the applications tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merits, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has ninety days from the close of the hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has one hundred days from the date of filing to file this decision. No decision is final until the written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed in the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a twenty day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with a relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the Registry of Ds to take effect. Tonight's agenda, a public hearing on ZBA FY 2023-12, Thomas and David Casey, request for a special permit under Section 3.01, 3.3211, and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw to construct a non-owner occupied duplex consisting of two units with each containing four bedrooms, eight total, on the same parcel as an existing two-story duplex with seven bedrooms at 798-800-North Pleasant Street, MAP 8A, Parcel 66, RN Neighborhood Residence Zoning District. This is continued from July 27th, 2023. There'll be a general public comment period on matters not before the board tonight, other business not anticipated within the last forty hour, forty-eight hours, and adjournments. First order of business is consideration of minutes from July 27th. I have looked over the minutes, I don't think there's any changes. Does anybody have any, any comments or change, suggested changes? Yes, Ms. Greenbaum?
I believe that I, I wrote it down, I think it's on page five. Um, that you almost spelled Kathy's name, it's a C-A-T-H-Y.
Or Coun- Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Okay. Got it, good catch.
Noted.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes, page five. Yeah, um, I have, I have several, but bef- before I go into them, I wonder if it's acceptable if we have, if we just see typos. Can we send them in advance directly to Rob, or do we have to raise them here in the meeting? Where it's not changing the, the meaning or anything, just a spelling?
Well, I would.
I've done that in other commi- other committees, we can just send, send.
I would, no, I, you can have a conversation with Rob almost on, as long as no other member, my understanding is as long as no other member is part of that conversation, you can have a conversation with the staff about substantive matters, not much less typographical matters, so.
Okay.
I think that would be okay, but, um, Rob just rubbed his head, so I might be wrong. Was that, is that correct, Rob?
No, I wasn't rubbing my head because of that.
Okay.
All right, all right, well, I'll do that next time, so, so, uh, page two. Um, the paragraph below the three bullets, the last sentence of that, said Building Commissioner to determine the extent, not extend.
Yep.
Uh, and the, okay, page four, the fourth bullet, um, only because this is clearly an important issue, the comment from Jozna, if that's correct? I think it's complementary with an E, not an I. So just to match the, what's in the bylaw.
Yep.
Okay. And then page five, item four B, about an EV charging station. I think that applicant said they would, they would in, I, I think, make it EV ready, but I'm not sure they said they would actually create that, so.
So basically what?
Maybe my memory is wrong about that.
No, so basically what they said during the hearing, Sarah, was that, uh, they're going to make it possible to convert those spots to EV spots, I think they're gonna put the conduits in the ground.
Right.
Just beforehand, but they weren't gonna actually make them like EV spots. That's why, that's the way I interpreted from the meeting transcript.
Right, so does B, 4B correctly reflect that? It says, show the location of at least one EV charging station with the ability to expand.
So it's correct in that I put that in the list's requirements in their plans, they did agree to show them anyways. Just to show where they would go.
I see.
They want to install them in the future, I mean, do you want me to clarify that better?
I, I just, I, I just wanted to be accurate, I'm, I'll defer.
So, Ms. Marshall, there, these are board recog- these are the items that staff sent to the applicant saying, this is saying, here's what we need you to, to do. So I, those should probably be actu- accurately reflect pretty actually sent.
Okay, okay. It's not, it's not memorializing our conversation about the issue.
But I think you raise a good point, that it should memorialize our conversation someplace in the minutes, because that was, said, the applicant did say that, that they would, uh, make ready the EV stations. So that should be someplace in the, in the discussion, I think, Rob.
Yep, I can include that.
Okay, can I go on, or tell me when I, I think I only have, I think I only have one more.
All right, well, just hold on, let, let Rob know what he's gonna do, and then we'll get your next one. Okay, all right, Ms. Marshall?
So the you drive south, the sign business, first bullet. I think it should, I suggest it be clarified here that this is the town's wayfinding sign project. Because again, I was completely baffled, I was so confused what we were talking about, because the permit was granted for the owner's son, owner's sign, and this instead is now approving a town-owned sign, so I just think that should be clear.
Yeah.
So it could be in that first bullet, could be in the fourth bullet, proposed town-owned welcome sign.
I think just to write it front.
Okay.
Town-owned wayfinding sign project to be, make it clear.
That's it.
All right, any other suggested changes to the minutes? All right, um, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So moves, is there a second?
Aye.
Mr. Henry seconds, um, any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, the vote occurs on the motion. Now the Chair votes aye, Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous, motion is carried. Next order of business is, um, are there any further dis- disclosures from members on the panel? We had disclosures regarding this in, uh, July 27th, they don't have to be repeated, but if there's anything new.
Do I, should I disclose that, uh, I do business with the law firm from this, this lawyer as a partner?
Okay. All right, any other disclosures? Or not, if not, um, next order of business is ZBA FY 2023-12, Thomas and David Casey, request for the special permit under Section 3.01, 3.211, and 10.38 of the zoning bylaw to construct a non-owner occupied duplex consisting of two units with each unit containing four bedrooms, eight total, on the same parcel as the existing two-story duplex with seven bedrooms at 798-800-North Pleasant Street, MAP 8A, Parcel 66, RN Neighborhood Residence Zoning District. This is continued from 7/27/2023 meeting. Let me read some submissions, um, most of these are in the project application report, but there are also additional submissions since, um, that July meeting. Days, they include, uh, a complaint from the applicant, a complaint response form, staff submissions, a 798-800-North Pleasant Street police log through July 31st, 2023, two, order correct issued by John Thompson in July of 2020, and three, rental permit issued July 12th, 2023, expired June 30th, 2023. In addition, there are other submissions which include, Inspection Services, date of July 20, those are met, those were here from, uh, staff, that's from town, then we have a letter from Jozna Regge of July 27th, we have a letter from members of the, of, from Counselor Shane from July 27th, we have a memo from Counselor Shane from November 4th, we have a list of code related issues from Inspection Services dated 9/19/2023. There is, um, included some, included in the record were some of the reference zoning, uh, Board of, zoning bylaw uh, sections that we had discussed and have been referenced in the discussion by the board. There was a September 20th memo, um, from Jozna Rig and Rebecca Miller. There is a September 21st email and letter from, um, Mr. Tom Reedy Esquire asking for a, the hearing to be continued to October 26th. There's a September 23rd meeting from, our September 23rd memo and letter from numerous residents of the neighborhood that we received. There is a, um, alternative, um, map showing which, um, properties in the neighborhood are owner occupied and non-owner occupied. There's a, um, and those are rental, identified as rental properties. There is a trash, picture of a trash bin, bin as of September 2023. There is a September 24th, uh, letter from Denise Barberette. There is a September 26th letter from, uh, Becky Miller and, um, I think Jozna Regge again, um, follow-up on the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Then there's a meeting, um, a letter from Ira Brick on Sep- September 27th. And lastly, we have, um, um, a letter from Mr. Tom Reedy Esquire of Bacon Wilson requesting the, the permission to withdraw without precedent, prejudice, this application for a special permit. Rob, have I fr- have I missed any submissions, is there anything else we need to reference?
No, you, you pretty much hit everything, Mr. Chairman. I can't think of anything else that wasn't left out of the list you just described.
Great. All right, so, um, given that that's the submissions, uh, who's gonna be representing the applicant tonight? Mr. Reedy?
I believe so, and, um, I can promote him to, uh, panelists, so he can give us.
Panelists, please.
Yep, all right. He should be joining us shortly.
Mr. Reedy, are you representing the applicant?
I am.
All right, would you just state your name and address for the record?
I'd be happy to, uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Tom Reedy, Attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, uh, here on behalf of the applicant.
Great, so just as a notice for the board, uh, we have two requests from the applicant. The first was for further continuance and the second was for a withdrawal without prejudice. So I assume that the applicant would like us to consider the request to withdraw without precedent first, and then if that is not approved, consider the request to continue the public hearing until October 26th, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that's fair to say, the, the obvious hope is that y- you'll accept that withdrawal without prejudice, and then this will be kind of taken off your docket.
And then the, the continuance is moot.
Precisely, yes. And if we have to technically withdraw it, whatever you need for that, that's, you know, we're happy to do that, but the, the hope is to withdraw, essentially based upon
Yep.
uh, all the information that we've got.
So the procedure we're gonna follow tonight is, is this, um, we're gonna have the applicant present why they wish to withdraw the application. Then the board and the staff will discuss their request to withdraw. Will permit com- public comment on the motion to withdraw, but not on the merits of the application itself. And after the subsequent questions from the board, we'll move to a public meeting while keeping the public hearing open for consideration of a motion to permit the withdrawal of the application. So does, does everybody understand the process tonight? All right. Mr. Reedy, uh, do you wish to speak to your request to withdraw the application without prejudice?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's pretty simple. Um, you know, I got involved with these folks subsequent to their July, I think it was 27th hearing. Uh, I happened to be on that hearing earlier in the evening, subsequently, I, maybe a couple weeks ago, I started working with them, um, got my feet under me a bit with some of the material, had a subsequent conversation with, uh, the town, thought it would be best to continue to give us some more time to really process all of the comments, saw some additional comments, had an additional conversation with the town, and thought that it would be in our best interest just to, to withdraw. Um, and frankly, go back to the drawing board, you know, understanding that there were comments about management, um, et cetera. You know, when we think about, when I, when I approach these, I, I think of it in the context of 10.38. And, you know, that was something that I think we have to consider a little bit, um, more strongly. So we had that, we had to talk about complementary use, is it allowed, is it not allowed? And so we thought, listen, at this point, well, let's withdraw, uh, let's go back to the drawing board, and then, uh, let's get our feet under us, um, with the management of the property, and then let's figure out what ultimately, you know, we, you know, they want to do, um, with the property. So it was really just kind of based on the totality of circumstances, we thought at this point it was best to request that withdrawal, uh, without prejudice.
I, I'd like to ask Rob Moore to frame this issue for us a bit, because it's been, there, there's been a lot of conversations about, and a lot of confusion, I think, about numerous provisions of the zoning bylaw, complementary requirements under 10.38, et cetera, et cetera. Rob, would you just kind of discuss some of the issues that have been raised by this application and how the town is viewing them, and how you are viewing them?
May I just ask one question?
Yes, Mr. Henry, absolutely. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Henry.
Tom, Tom, if, what will be different if we grant your motion to withdraw when you come back? What will be different?
Um, first of all, will we come back? Uh, second of all, would we come back with, what would it look like, like, I don't, I, I mean, really, at this point, I have, I have no idea, right? I, I don't even know if they would come back, and if so, I don't know if they would come back with some different, you know, is it, is it, I, I, I don't even know, right? So I think it's just the, the problem with not granting with the withdrawal, and I guess what would it be? Forcing us to go forward, if you force us to go forward, then I think at the least we should be granted a continuation so that we can look to address all of the comments made by the public. The problem with that is then we, we're just prolonging this when we frankly don't want to go forward on this, because, you know, um, we just think that there's probably, if there is a better way to do it, we'd like to a- a- approach that better way to do it. So I can't tell you at this point, like, we haven't done plans, it's, this isn't something where we withdraw, redo the plans, and then say, okay, here's what we're doing, right? We, we withdraw, get our feet under us, you know, they're listening, like, I'm talking to them, and, you know, I think we haven't seen each other much in this forum, you know, I do this quite often. We listen to what the neighbors are saying, like, you take that to heart, they're, they're looking at the site, and so I think they're really figuring out, okay, you know, two units in a different building on the same site, is that the best? Is it, first, let's get our house in order, right? They, I think they've been in the past couple of years better than they've been in the past, but there's probably still room for improvement, and so it's talking about that. So before we even, we're to bring something else forward, I think, you know, and I use the phrase, get your house in order, I think that's where we're at, so. You know, I can't tell you, oh, we're gonna come back with a, I just don't know.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, so could you just, um, clarify? I think I understand, but I would like it to be explicit what you mean by without prejudice.
Yeah, so if you, the, if you, um, allow us to withdraw, then, you know, we include without prejudice, because essentially, if you don't, it's tantamount to a denial. If you deny us, we're prohibited from bringing back the exact same application for a period of two years. Now, can they get things together in a period of two years? So that, um, maybe it makes sense, maybe, um. Would, you know, when we've had conversations with the zoning enforcement officer about what complementary uses mean, does in the interim some, the, the bylaw change? Does a case come out that says, oh, hey, look, this is how it should be interpreted? And then we'd be prohibited from coming back? So it really just kind of takes it out of your hands, says, listen, we hear you, we're, we're not gonna go forward here. And then, kind of frankly offline, if the building commission's determination is that this can't be brought because it's not, we're here because we thought it could be brought. If his determination is, so by pulling it out, we're not fighting that fight right now. If they determine, if he determines, oh, it can't be brought because they're not complementary uses, then we're not back in front of you on the same thing, because we're prohibited from coming back before you on the same thing. So this is, it's really just to allow us to, um, exit and then still preserve opportunities if something else materially changes.
So in short, Ms. Marshall, it means they can't bring back the exact same thing. They can bring back something different on that property, right?
Uh, is that correct, Tom? I said without prejudice means you could bring back the same.
Yes.
You wish to, not that they couldn't.
But if they do that, we would have, we'd be in the exact same position.
Yeah, 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 but, but with prejudice means, don't come back.
Don't come back for two years.
Yeah, with that, right, yeah. Right.
Yes. All right. Um, Mr. Moore?
Uh, thank you, so I, I thought I'd just make some comments about a couple of sections of the bylaw. Uh, it's been, um, commented on, discussed at length by, you know, much of the public, uh, responses, and, uh, I'm sure the board's been looking at, at these provisions as well. And, uh, starting with Section 3.01, and that's kind of the main focus of, um, you know, concern with, uh, this application as, as, has been written so far, uh, in, in multiple examples, uh, and that, that language says that the development on a single lot of more than one dwelling or more than one principal use is expressly prohibited except where those principal uses are clearly complementary to each other. So that's the unclear language that we're all kind of struggling with a little bit. Uh, and, and I I'm reminded of a conversation I had with our town attorney where he, he told me that every time he reads it, he thinks something else afterwards. Uh, so I think we're all probably feeling a little bit of that. But, uh, I do want to talk about, you know, how we've looked at this in the past up to this point. Uh, and maybe a week ago, I started looking at it a little bit differently. I've been asked over the years, uh, many times, can I put two single-family houses on a lot? I have, in every instance, said no. Uh, I, I'd say, I've said that, you know, my read of this is that, you know, the dwelling that it's referring to is a single-family dwelling, we don't define it. And I'm not willing to, you know, pu- permit that type of development, uh, without the bylaw having standards and conditions and criteria to deal with that, if the town ever chose to do something like that. So that's been a hard no over, over and over again, uh, year after year. Now, every other combination of uses, uh, one or two different types of principal uses or of the same type of use as listed in Table 3 has gone forward to the Board of Appeals for consideration in the past, uh, and in some cases, the planning board if they're non-residential uses typically. Uh, and that, you know, that has been viewed as well, you know, under the Special Permit Granting Authority, if the board, you know, found it appropriate to allow more than one building, more than one use, made the connection and finding that they're complementary to each other, perhaps it has the possibility to move forward. So that's, you know, that's where we are today, the board has granted permits for two duplexes, more than one duplex on a property. The board has granted permits for, uh, a duplex and a single family, so more than one dwelling on a property. Uh, so we, we've done that, there's not many of them, there's a, a, a small number of them, maybe three or four in the, the twelve years that I've been working here that I can recall. Uh, but this application really caused me to look closely at this language, and I have questions. I have concerns about how we've interpreted the bylaw, or how the bylaw maybe hasn't been interpreted yet and just been, you know, used. And I want to look at that, and so that, I guess what I'm here to tell the board is that if this application is withdrawn, and I would suggest that it, it is probably a good thing to with, let this application be withdrawn. The applicant has no involvement with this conversation, other than my few conversations with Mr. Reedy over the last couple of days. Uh, the applicant had no, uh, idea that this was a question or a concern of mine, uh, and I, uh, would like to have my questions answered, talk a little bit more with the town attorney, and, uh, be able to come up with a clear interpretation of this section so that no other application gets in front of the board unless it's something that can move forward and has a path so that the board can do their work and judge it on its merits. So, um, that's where I am with this, um, you know, I, I, I feel like this application being withdrawn is the right move, uh, and, and not moving forward under the, um, expectation that it originally was, uh, filed under as, you know, two complementary uses in the same use classification. Uh, and I can, you know, I'd be happy to answer any more questions that I can.
I, I think I had some conversations with Rob, and I'm in agree- I, I think I had some conversations with Rob and I'm in agreement that I think the, um, the right, this is the best path for us at this time. And I think it, uh, for a whole lot of reasons. It takes this, and, uh, issue that was not clear on both the complimentary uses as well as I think on ten point three eight. It seems clear to me that there needs to be clarity on the complimentary uses issue as well as I think other provisions on this, from this application. And I'm in favor of withdrawing this and letting the applicant come back and rework this if they're going to come up with something at all. Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, I'd like to, my notes to be accurate. So if Mr. Moore can just correct me, this is what I think I heard you say, that allowing two single family homes on one lot has been a hard no. But that it has been allowed, at least for applications to move forward, if it's two different kinds of residential structures, like a single family home and a duplex, is that? Or two, you, you said two duplexes, so not two single family homes, but two duplexes, which is, seems to be what we're talking, what this application was about, so.
Right, so, um, two, uh, single family houses has always been a no. Now, the by law doesn't have a, uh, permitting path, uh, through a land use, uh, permit. So it's not, it's not done by the planning board or the zoning board. It's simply a yes, they just move right into building permits. So when I've been asked, can I put two dwellings on a lot? The answer's been no, because there isn't any mechanism to approve that. Um, I, I read that language very plainly and said not more than one dwelling. And I referred to the dwelling that states in that section three point zero one as a single family dwelling. That's how I read and applied that. That, we don't have much guidance, you know, from that point on. Uh, so when we think about two duplexes and, you know, I had this conversation with the town attorney. The town attorney said, well, the board's not prohibited from granting a special permit for two duplexes. But it really would be nice if the by law somewhere else said, go ahead and do it if the board allows it. And that's where we are. We don't have that language. I've searched for it. It doesn't, it doesn't, um, suggest that, uh, that more than one duplex could be permitted. And then I think you get into a similar conversation when you look at, uh, a duplex and a single family dwelling. And maybe that even gets trickier. When we move on to the bigger residential, uh, prop, uh, developments, apartments and townhouses, it all of a sudden gets clearer because the by law in other sections very clearly says one or more buildings, three or more units, right? So it changed, and we don't, you know, we don't define dwelling in the by law. So it starts to really clearly open up the opportunity for, say, three apartment buildings on a property, as long as all the other dimensional requirements are met. Uh, so we've had, you know, we've had the, the duplex and the single family permitted. We've had more than one duplex when it's combined with an apartment project. So again, it's a different situation. It's a, you know, it was, that particular case was a property very large that could be divided up into multiple parcels if it wanted to, just not the same situation. We haven't permitted a case just like this, two duplexes on a lot that cannot fit anything else, you know, that, that, um, in the duplex category. Um, so we haven't done one, we haven't permitted something just like this one that's in front of you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Henry. You have your hand up.
I, I, I think Ms. Greenbaum was first.
Okay, Ms. Greenbaum.
If he wants to go first, he can, that's not.
I just didn't keep track of order correctly, sorry.
I've been troubled by this application when I first read the legal ad before I was even put on this panel. And I know that there are other situations pending that are similar. The difference between this one and some of the others that have been granted, except for the, I think he's talking about the two single family homes and the duplex, maybe North Amherst. And I'm not sure whether that's Village Center or Neighborhood. But the ones that have been granted and the one that I know about that may be pending down the line are in general residence. And this is neighborhood residence. And, uh, I think that we need to have some clarity on the issue because there's also neighborhood, neighborhood, um, discussion, put it that way, to what, what may happen. I think Mr. Reedy knows what I'm talking about. Um, I think you can make a case for the duplexes and the triplexes because they are different uses and it is a different zoning area. All you have to do is add an efficiency apartment to each one and you've got three units in each building or the buildings could have been, you can make a case for that, I think. Um, I'm a little bit hesitant here because I remember my family has a similar thing going on, I believe, but I'm not sure, on, on North Whitney Street. But that again is a single and a duplex, which are not the same use on the table. I was so concerned by this issues and the precedence it might be setting. I started my research, read Bobrovsky, couldn't find anything about complimentary uses. And apparently from everything I was reading online and cases, there are no cases except for a couple where they're business use with a residential use or Judy's downtown, which is the addition of the mixed use building with a restaurant, which are clearly not in conflict with each other, except maybe parking, no. But, um, I've done the research independently and I am concerned about the issue of without prejudice, because I really don't want this to come back. I don't want to set the precedent of people dividing up their property and putting more units on it, especially when the neighbor next door doesn't want to sell the extra land. Um, I, I, I can say this one positive thing, Tom. One positive thing came out of this. I'm used to driving by that house every single day I go anywhere because the shortest distance between North Amherst and downtown is North Pleasant Street. All of a sudden, I'm driving and I didn't recognize the house. It happened to be a Monday morning and the CBA site visit was going to be on Tuesday. So for that, we can be thankful that that whole yard got cleaned up and the brush cleaned away. And it, it, it really didn't look that bad when we got there. So maybe it's for a while, at least for the picture we got of the garbage. It was, that, the application was an improvement for the neighborhood. And so I, I'm hesitant about the with prejudice part, without prejudice part. But if I vote no, that sort of leaves us in a very bad situation. But what does that mean? So I will, I pass the baton to the next speaker.
All right, Mr. Henry.
So I, I have a few comments and then some questions. Um, my, my, my first comment is that, um, if you look at the word complimentary, I, I get that that has been the struggle with, um, a lot of people. Um, it, it means complete or supplied mutual needs. That's my interpretation of that. And based on what we've heard, that is intent of this new building, it's mutual need. There's a building there that's performing one function and adding another one will do just that. Um, the other question, um, so, and if I understood Rob Moore correctly, um, if the by law doesn't say we can't grant this permit, doesn't stand to reason that we can. If there's no definition of complimentary, this doesn't allow us to interpret that definition and make a finding that where, where it is vague, we can, you know, we have discussion and then we say, and then we make a decision based on that. And if we're not, and if we grant this request to withdraw this petition, are we saying that then we're going to go back to the attorneys or rewrite the bylaws to give a definitive definition of complimentary? Therefore, it is no longer, um, unambiguous? And what is a process that surrounds that? And if we do go in and define complimentary, um, doesn't it mean that whenever anyone comes back to us for a special permit, it doesn't require as much? Because then there's a definition, we can simply look and says, no, yes, without even having discussion because it is right there in black and white. And now my question is, given the size of this lot, um, an option would arguably be to divide this lot. If it was divided, wouldn't then this petition be allowed to build this building on the divided lot?
Mr. Moore.
So this particular lot does not have the minimum frontage and area to be separated into two parcels. So that is not, that is not an option. If it had, if it had additional area and at least 20,000 square feet for each lot, then it could happen if that was the scenario, but that isn't the case here. And I just, I just want to just back up on something on your comment, uh, just to make sure, um, the issue about the complimentary uses, the, the question about it is understood. Because, you know, one of the questions here is, do we even have the ability to consider if two duplexes are complement, complementary to each other? Or as we read three point zero one, where the language says, you know, not to develop on a single lot more than one dwelling or more than one principal use described in three point three. The quote, one of the questions here is, if you're using two of one type of principal use, is that more than one principal use? Or does it have to be two different types of principal uses? And I hope this is somewhat clear, you know, making some sense. But it's, you know, it, that's part of what makes it unclear. And, you know, one, one read of it initially was that, yeah, two of anything is more than one. Uh, but I think that needs to be looked at closer. Uh, you know, and to another one of your comments, uh, my goal is to, uh, is to kind of work through this, get whatever legal advice that's needed to both make sure we have a clear interpretation of this by law. And to be quite honest, there's more than one other pending application of this type or, uh, design teams working on applications of this type that I know about. So I need to get an answer to this. And if the answer is supported legally that an application can come to the board, then the board will have to, you know, deal with that and hit and, and go through the process. But if it is different than what we thought it might have been originally or if there's a recommendation to amend the by law, you know, we'll work on that and the planning staff will be advised of that decision, uh, you know, as soon as we make it, which will be soon. It'll have to be.
Any further questions, Mr. Henry?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Um, I think Mr. Meadows was up next.
Uh, I, I agree with everything that Mr. Moore is saying. Uh, I think he needs to be given clarity, not only in this instance, but for all of the instances that may be coming up that are similar. There is another issue within this, and that is, um, can you, or should we allow an instance where there's a special permit given for a building and then ha- allow an additional building with an additional special permit on the same property? Which seems to complicate this issue, but it, but it's not an issue alone. It, it seems to me that it's, it's a creep issue in some regards. I don't know what other word to use, in which, um, we're adding special permits on special permits, which I, I cannot imagine that was the intention of the bylaws. And, and Mr. Moore should be given clarity on how to make a judgment on that.
Thank you, Craig. Ms. Marshall, you have your hand up.
Yes, but, but I think I'll take it down because, uh, I'll reserve it for our public meeting. The deliberation part.
All right. Any other comments, questions from the board or from staff? All right. Um, we will have public comment and, um, during the public hearing. Um, so Rob, um, Rob Wachilla, is it, you, for a phone, do you push four? Uh, push pound and nine or push pound and four? Push pound and nine?
So I believe you press, uh, star nine.
Star nine.
On the phone, yep. And for those who are in attendance can use the raised hand function.
Right. So we'll now have a public hearing on this matter. Um, if you wish to speak, please use the raised hand function on Zoom. Or if you're on your phone, press star nine to indicate you wish to speak. When you, when called upon, please give your name and add for, and address for the record. And please keep your comments to about three minutes. Most importantly, please remember that the issue before the board is whether to grant the applicant's to request to withdraw the application without prejudice. We are not considering the merits of the application at this time. And if the board grants the request, the application is no longer before the board. If the board does not grant the request, then it may consider the request to continue consideration until October 26th. If that second request is approved and the substance of the application will be, and then the substance of the application will be considered by the board and public comment will be received at the October 26th hearing. So try to keep the public comment to the topic before us. I will help to remind speakers who wander into topics not before the board tonight. So if anybody wishes to comment, please raise your hand or push star nine on your phone. Rob and I will work to, um, provide the ability for you to speak.
So I did see a hand go up, but immediately went down. Um, um, I guess we can give, oh, there's the hand. So we have Josna Regge and I'm going to give speaking permissions.
Hello?
Hello, please give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Josna Regge and I live on 96 Farview Way. Um, I just have a very short comment, um, with regard to this, um, request to see the application withdrawn without prejudice. Along with the more than 45 other residents who signed our neighborhood letter asking you to reject this special permit application, I would be glad to see the application withdrawn. I would have thought though that the board had enough information before you by now to reject it altogether, rather than leaving all of us hanging in limbo for the next two years. While, uh, while laws are changed and to, to allow this to go forward. So thank you for your service on the board. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Are there other public comments?
Not see any more public comments.
No, I don't either. All right, so if there are no other public comments, um, we have the opportunity to, um, board can ask last questions for the, of the applicant that can respond to the, the comments from the, the public. Um, are there any other board members' comments before we move to a public meeting? All right, if not, if there are no further questions, we'll move to public meeting while keeping the public hearing open in case we need to gather additional information. The public meeting is where we, board members deliberate and is generally not a time for public comment. Do any board members have general thoughts on this request to withdraw? Before we deal with the motion itself. All right, um, Ms. Marshall, you, you had already foreshadowed your comments in the public meetings. So you're up, up first for sure.
Okay, so I hope this is still not premature, but I, I. Okay, so I hope this is still not premature, but I, I, I want to respond to Ms. Greenbaum's. Um, comment that if I heard it correctly, that she'd prefer it was withdrawn with prejudice. I think that is unfair at this time if. If the, how to interpret this three point oh one is really up in the air. Because if it comes back from the attorney or. Whoever, if, if it is settled that it is a allowable use. Then we would have unfairly or I, I think unfairly restricted the app. Uh, potential applicant's ability to come back to us. Um, it, it might fail for other reasons. It might be unsatisfactory proposal, but um, because. The interpretation of this section of the bylaw is, is evidently on. Quite uncertain. I don't, I don't think we're in a position to deny it. So it's my comment.
Mr. Meadows?
I'm wondering what uh, what the, it seems as though the, the best thing. If I'm correct, is for the bylaw to be rewritten in a fashion which would give it clarity. I'm wondering what the process is for rewriting a bylaw. And what kind of time it takes to get that done. No- nothing in Amherst takes is quick.
Yeah, and amending bylaws is, is a complicated. And I think it requires town council action and two thirds vote, but Mr. Moore, can you clarify that?
Yes, um, so bylaw amendments happen on a, a few different ways, but typically, you know, they're either started. By staff with, you know, a recommendation to the town manager to bring it to the council. Or uh, some other committee or board such as the planning board that would typically. Uh, do such a thing. Uh, it's a lengthy process, uh, a lot of it dictated by state law on how. How often and how hearings are held and you know, uh. In our experience, um, it's many, many months to get even the simplest um, bylaw amendment. Um, so I, I think although it may go on the list and to be honest, there's a lot of them. There's a lot of pieces of this bylaw that have unclear provisions such as this that leave. Leave it up for interpretation, sometimes more challengeable than others. I think our goal in the short term is to get. In the best legal position we can be with interpreting the bylaw. So that our decision and the board's decision, the guidance provided to the board is best supported. And you know, we just need a little bit of time to do that and, and then I can have a. Um, you know, what, how I will interpret the bylaw when an applicant comes in to see me sorted out. Um, you know, I'm not prepared to do this tonight at the, in this moment. Uh, you know, I've already started thinking about this and just wanna finish that. And, and be able to deal with that in the next application. Um, which is why the, you know, the unknown is really why the withdrawal makes, you know, good sense, good move. Uh, the applicant was willing to do it. Um, if, if the withdrawal is denied and the board moves into making a decision about this particular subject. Now we're, you know, we're open to litigation, not only from this applicant, but maybe another developer that's watching that was thinking of doing the same thing. Saying, oh, I can argue that other point. I can, I can, I can make a case, which is what we heard from our town attorney. Yeah, I can support this, but I really wish it, you know, said something different. So the bylaw amendments take time. It'll likely go on a list. I can see already, we'd like to have this worded differently. I think it'll go on a list with the planning department. Which is really long and I, I, I wouldn't even wanna guess one. I think that could come up. Uh, in, in future discussions, uh, but I think in the short term, we have to make a decision.
And often these public hearings could be multiple, especially if it comes from a different board that proposes the amendment initially. They sometimes could have two or three public hearings and then town council might take a while with it too. So it's a very lengthy process.
So this is a case, it seems to me that we're gonna have to deal with some gray area for a while. Right now it's undefined. And what we're looking for is using the best knowledge of town staff, resources from. Outside resources and state laws and the other kinds of um, resources that. Mr. Moore can use to form a view as to what complementary means and uh, in this, in this instance. And apply that and then, then that's gonna be up to us for a while to, to use that and um. Cause we're not gonna get clearance from clear, we're not gonna get clarity from the town for quite a while. Yeah, and it could be a, it could be a long time, but we can get a better sense of what we should do with this. Uh, through a interpretation that our, that uh, Mr. Moore and the town attorney and others can come up with. And that will help us and, and it still means it's only one of the many factors we have to consider on an application. That's just one and, and. This particular application, I believe, has other things as well that um, argue either for or against it. It gives it pretty strongly. So I, I think that withdrawal at this point in time without prejudice, because I think Ms. Marshall is correct. That there could be a way to get back, um, to come back before us if there's a different interpretation. And also I don't know that, it just seems punitive to me. I think the applicant got caught and caught up. Um, you know, in something that they didn't understand and I don't think I didn't fully understand the implications. I think it seems punitive to me to not have to, to, and I don't even know, I don't even know the way we can change the request from, from um. With, without prejudice to with prejudice except by denying, by going through the whole process and. Having the, and making decisions on the application. I don't know if we can on our own start the uh. Force the applicant to withdraw with prejudice. I'm just not sure we could do that. So. I, this seems to me to be, make the most sense as a, as a, as a um, path. And I think it gives us the ability to make some decisions with greater information and greater clarity down the road. Um, so who was next? Um, Mr. Henry, were you up next?
I, I was. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I do agree with you, Mr. Chair, with Ms. Marshall that that prejudice is the most appropriate thing to do. Um, what I, what I'm struggling with though is that um. The ZBA is a board of appeals that it, um. The, the bylaws is, doesn't have clarity that we're asking for and to everyone's earlier point. We have pending applications that is similar. Um, the whole point is that the ZBA does their level best to make care of an appropriate interpretation. Um, yes, there's a possibility that we may get it wrong and somebody may challenge that and, but that's the whole point of the board. To delay this to say, hey, let's get some further clarity from the written bylaws. I don't think that's realistic because you know, i- if you think about when a law is written and it gets challenged and it goes to court. Um, the court doesn't delay making decisions so the laws can be changed. And so that's the part I'm struggling with here is that we're kicking the can, so to speak, so we can get somebody else to tell us what to do. Now, I appreciate that, you know, the town attorneys may give us more guidance and that is appropriate. But to everyone's point, they cannot change the bylaws and unless the bylaws are actually changed. This is the document that we have to live with, with everyone else that comes before us with a similar situation. So are we saying then by not making a decision here, when anyone else comes with something similar? We're gonna make the same ruling to say we have to wait for the bylaws to be changed so we can actually make a decision? So while I think that the petitioner here is. I withdrawing gives us, you know, some coverage, so to speak. Um, I. I think we should have made a decision on this if we had, if we had enough um, information about. What they're building and if everything's up to code and things like that, I think we should have made a decision rather than saying we need clarity on the bylaws. I think a decision should be made with what we have, understanding that this is the guidelines that we have now. And the ZBA's role is to make the level best decision with what we have. Because to, to everyone's point, re- changing something takes time and it's gonna take a long time. When there's so many committees and boards involved. So um, the petitioner gave us a way out, but. I think we need to work with what we have because this is gonna come up again. And while we want Mr. Moore to have um. Everything that he needs to make an informed decision, that's not what we are. We, we have what we have and we think, and I think we have to do a level plus to work within that.
Mr. Henry, if I, if I could just try to understand your, your point. You're saying that we, you, you, your preference uh, would have been to just to make a decision on this pending application. And make a decision on complementary as well as the other findings we have to make and move forward and have that be. Uh, what we have to operate on from the future.
Yes.
But one of the problems I had with this application is I don't know if the bylaw allowed us to even consider this application yet. And I need more clarity on that. Because one reading of that app, of that provision tells me. There's no, there's no role for the ZBA to approve a second dwelling. Uh, identical dwelling unit on that, on a piece of, uh, second duplex on that piece of property. And that we, it really shouldn't have even been before us is one interpretation. And that, I think that was a legitimate interpretation and needs more clarity and needs more uh, flesh, fleshing out and more investigation. The other ones, there are other interpretations that came before us that the applicant had. There, there was a complimentary use. Um, so I think there was. I don't think that we had enough information right now to do what you wanna do, which would be ideal and, and not have to have. Spending a, a, an evening discussing whether we should decide if something or not. It'd be great to have the, the information before us, but I thought there was too much. My readings that there was too much ambiguity to even decide whether this could be legitimately before the ZBA and then. If it could be, I agree with you. Then that's our job. Our job is to make calls on sometimes on some um. Some issues that aren't clear or there, or, or to make those findings, which, which are just judgments on our part. Um, we have to make those, but I don't, I wasn't sure that this should even be before us at this time. And that's why I needed some further, uh. That's why I like the idea of further clarification. Go ahead.
And I think I would have, and I think I would have welcomed the conversation to say, do we even have the authority to hear this petition and make a decision based on that?
Well, I, yeah, that's, I mean, that's all part of the, I think that's all part of what the town staff and. Uh, attorney and other people need to help guide us on and give us more information, then we can decide that. But I just, I don't know that we're ready to do that. I'm not ready to do that yet. And I'd like to have more information for the board. But I, I sympathize with your desire. I just don't have the, I just don't feel like I have the information anymore. Mr. Moore, you, do you wanna respond to what I said?
Not necessarily to what you said, but just that um, a reminder about the process here in Amherst. The rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals requires an applicant to come to me for authorization to. To move the application to the town clerk and ultimately to schedule a hearing with the board. General law, the zoning bylaw authorizes the building commissioner to interpret the bylaw. So you know, what, what will likely happen is that a decision will be made about this particular section. And you will, uh, you may never see an application again like it. Uh, it, it come in front of the board, uh, because generally when I tell an applicant that their, their, the bylaw doesn't permit something from going forward. They move on to something else, uh, and it, and they look for another alternative. And if, and if they don't, they appeal that decision. And then the board gets to hear both sides of the case and make a decision about my interpretation of the bylaw. So you know, it's an intentional process to not put the board into this position that you're in. Of course, you interpret every section of the bylaw when you're reviewing. You, you know, you're reviewing an application, whether it's a parking standard or a light fixture and, and you'll continue to do that, but. Uh, this one, uh, I think would be, you know, best if I could get to that place. And not only by this, that, this applicant here, if they choose to come back and, and talk with us, but others that are, uh. You know, thinking of doing something similar and, and make sure that they're um, that the application is going forward and we're reviewing it. In, in such a way that it's appropriate for the use that's being proposed. Uh, you know, if we're gonna look at these applications differently, this language differently, it may result in a different review by staff. And you know, that's a distribution to multiple departments, not just uh, the conservation development department.
Mr. Henry, we, we've gone down the road on your first question. Do you have other comments or do you wanna continue? On, on this?
We can continue with Ms. Greenbaum.
I'm sorry?
I, I will um, ask my follow up later. I think Ms. Greenbaum has her end up.
All right. Ms. Greenbaum?
I've been through this several times with the bylaw over my years. One case is a fraternity and a sorority, the same thing. Is that the same use? And that was with Bonnie Weeks and it ended up that the frat won on appeal. But my, my number one suggestion is we really need to go through that bylaw and start over. And hopefully I didn't, we get somebody like Dodson and Flinker there who would come up with something like a. They did for Northampton, which is a hybrid bylaw with form-based code on top of an underlying code. That looks at what's on the ground and they did such a good job in Northampton and I listened to some of those public. Comment hearings that they had. Um, I really wish we could go that route. Um, the second comment that I wanted to make is that I went back to nineteen twenty seven and all the town reports that are online. Looking at the, the annual report from the zoning board of appeals and I'll tell you back through the forties and fifties, they. They denied more permits than they allowed, including for things like beauty shops. And you would wonder why they would turn down a beauty shop, but the information unfortunately isn't there. I, that was the first zoning bylaw in twenty seven, twenty eight, so. There was another huge revision in nineteen sixty four and I think from what I can tell. And I'm just sort of figuring this out. I have no proof. Without the reports from the planning board, but I believe that this whole issue of complimentary use came in the nineteen sixty four revision. Cause it seems to be in there since then. And if anybody could find a report from the planning board somewhere in archives. You might get some reason why they recommended that and what they had in mind when they recommended that complimentary use be added. To an existing zoning bylaw with that major revision. And that was just when the university started growing very fast. And then we had the, the SCAR report in the seventies, found seventy five, seventy six when I joined. Town meeting. But it might be good, what were they thinking of at the time? Because single use on a parcel seems so axiomatic. But you can't find anything on, online uh, in terms of court cases against it. And as I say, the two complimentary uses that we find were a business development. Across from a residential development or in this two businesses in the San Antonio, which are those two cases and. Last fifty years, well, my, my last comment is going through the eighties with the rapid, everybody knew. When they came in for um, Amity Place, Salem Place, they knew, they all knew that they were gonna get cut in half. So came in with a maximum number of units they could possibly get and every single permit that came book. I could have had thirteen townhouses at eighty five North Whitney Street and I got eight. So I mean, that's the way things were then. People just didn't want the town changing so fast. So anyway, if somebody can find those notes in some archives from nineteen sixty four, it might be a good idea to find out what people were thinking then. It may be relevant, who knows?
Thank you, Ms. Greenbaum. Um, Mr. Henry, I know you had some more questions.
I, I, I think um. My. I, I, I don't think it's, actually, I, I can ask this. So. If, if the intent here is to get more clarity on what is complementary and mean. What, what are we looking for in terms of a timeline and a process for um, cases coming before the ZBA? Few, future cases coming for the ZBA?
Well, I guess there's two questions. One is how long does it take? I guess, right, you have two questions. One is, how long is it gonna take to come up with with something that we can consider? And secondly is, what are the applications that are pending out there? Is that correct?
Ye- yes, and and given, and forgive me, given that we're talking about this particular petition. If there's a possibility to get clarity um on the bylaw. Would we say to um the petitioner? We have more information and we and this, and do we delay? Voting on their continuance until we to say, let's get more information that way, because to the public comment earlier. There is a concern that the neighbor is gonna be waiting for two years. Do we say, let's not vote on the continuance today, let's push this back to October twenty to October twenty six. See if we get the clarity that we need, and then we can make a a vote on the continuance or a vote to deny. If if the bylaw sup- says we can't grant what they're asking for.
Okay, um well, I think there's a couple of questions there. Timing on clarity and timing of the other applications I'll leave to ru- to Mister Moore to to speak to. And on your second question of whether it makes and um second question, my second part of your question, I think. You're saying, wouldn't it be better to just continue this and deal with it one way or the other, rather than put this off and then? Uh deny it now, let them withdraw it now, uh rather than denying it, let withdraw it now and come back with something else. Is that?
Yes, so if, yes, so if if we have some inclination to say. Um Mister Moore has spoken to attorneys or has a conference with attorneys, we may get some clarity on. That section of the bylaw. Wouldn't it make more sense rather than delaying a decision for this petitioner and the neighbors, quite frankly? Um to say, let's not vote tonight on the continuance, wait.
We we we're voting on withdrawal, right?
I'm sorry, on on the withdrawal. And say, okay, if we vote of an uh scheduled hearing, vote then. Or if we have a response by the next day, then we can say, we now have definitive answer to say. We cannot grant this, therefore it makes more sense to say no, rather than to just vote on your withdrawal.
Uh you know, I I, we did have one person who felt that they would like to have um a decision made tonight. And they they're worried that they might have some period of of uh uncertainty. That could, that is, is a legitimate concern. But I think it also provide, in in some ways, I think it provides more certainty to them if this is withdrawn. It's gonna take some time for the applicant to re- to reconsider this. They they're part of the reason they're withdrawing, I think, is not just the complimentary use, but the other issues that were raised in the application. And I think this gives them time to reconsider and re um. Refocus or perhaps redo the the application, so it'll be different than we see it today. And um and I and I think we are sending a message that we hear that in from the neighbors already. And is one of the things that I, one of the reasons I think this. One of the reasons I think that voting to allow the withdrawal without prejudice makes sense. Is that I think a signal that the board hears concerns not only about complimentary and whether we can even hear this application, but about other other aspects of the application. So I'm. And I would rather rather not uh bind up our schedule with uncertainty about whether. We're gonna have an a new application or just consider the same thing again. I'd like to give them time to come back, rethink it and come come forward. Maybe talk with the neighbors, maybe do some consultation, things that could make it easier to come to come to a decision on a pro- on a application that might work. So all in all, I would rather dispose of this now, tell them to come back and do it. Um and then then we can come back with something else if they indeed want to do that, and then we can move forward. That would be my preference. But I but I caused a lot of fa- hands to be raised on that response. And so I want to give people a chance to to comment, um one Mister Moore and then Mister Wachilla, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to to Mister Henry that, you know, it's it's not just the complimentary finding that I'm sure. Or complimentary, what is complimentary that that I'm struggling with? It's whether or not this type of application even gets that consideration. Because it might just be no, that it's prohibited and stop there in the read of the language. And and not even consider whether or not the two uses are complimentary. That's the first decision that I have to make. And then from that point forward, then there might be a um a case in front of the board, in front of the planning. In front of zoning board, planning board, myself, where you have to make a decision if the two uses are complimentary or agree to that. You know, so I think this board will will have that question in front of them someday and let, and you know, until this language changes. And that will be the time to really dig into what does complimentary mean and how is it applied in 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 that particular case. Um there are no applications that have been submitted. Uh so the timing, I would say there isn't one that's going to be in front of the board. Um if um if the decision after I look at this is that. If the two principal uses are not different classification types. If the decision in that situation is that the complimentary finding isn't applicable. They won't be coming to the board. They're gonna, they're gonna be told that it's not permitted by this bylaw. You know, unless somewhere in the bylaw authorizes it. Um so you know, that's that's the decision that would be made. Um that's a decision I'm gonna have to make for applications and and for uh applicants that are working on applications right now. Uh so this this discussion has forced that to happen. Whether or not you deny the application, I still have to do that. You know, and it and you would hope that you that the decisions would align, uh but they don't have to. Uh I still have to go through that process and and make an interpretation of the bylaw and advise an applicant based on their their proposals. Uh so that I wouldn't expect anytime soon for the board to be seeing an application. Uh you know, unless it's really clear to me that it's authorized by uh by the provisions of bylaw.
Miss Marshall?
I think it makes sense to allow the applicant to withdraw this. They don't want to go forward. I I gather for any number of reasons, not solely, although it's a threshold question of whether it's um permitted. But I wonder when Mister Moore gets his um. Comes comes to an interpretation that he's comfortable with after consulting with with whoever he needs to talk to. Couldn't he come back and tell us, tell the public what that interpretation is? Because otherwise, let's say, no further projects come to us. We don't know if it's because they've been told no, because the interpretation is it's not allowed. Or the interpretation is it is allowed, but no one's proposed that yet. So I guess I I'd like to know what the upshot of the um reconsideration of this three point oh one is.
Mister Moore?
Absolutely. I mean, everybody here now has spent a tremendous amount of time thinking about this for this application and talking about this tonight. Will make certain to put on a agenda item. Uh you know, ideally, you want to get this, make sure this group is all aware of it. Um if if not, I'll do something in writing. Or uh you know, maybe we have a business meeting coming up soon that we can talk about it, but uh absolutely, uh everyone will. Will know what's happening with this matter going forward.
Including the public, I mean, because this would need to be widely understood, or at least in. Available available to potential applicants.
Right, and I just, just to remind you, interpretations of the bylaw happen every single day. You know, so I I know this one's getting a lot of discussion and and is is confusing um at times, but. It happens every single day, so you know, we'll continue to to do our best to to make those available and 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 be consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Wachilla, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um just kind of building off what Rob said earlier about um the applicant withdrawing. Their um, sorry, the applicant withdrawing their their petition. It gives them the ability to rethink the whole project and kind of shape it in a way that fits in better with the bylaw. So say if they didn't want to pursue the current petition as is, they could definitely reshape it to make it more acceptable to the zoning bylaw. And there there are a number of issues that still have to be addressed too, just from the last hearing alone, like the biggest one. From what I've seen in my zoning review is the lot coverage calculations. I mean, those have to be better explained and we need more detail on that. I mean. That's that's one factor that could prevent this whole thing from happening if it was presented as is. And other things that might take even longer than a month to to address on the applicant's end, so. Granting the withdrawal would give the applicant the ability to make a better proposal down the road. Because they'll take all of these comments into consideration. You also have the issue with the second curb cut going on Old Town Road. You have the bus stop that's supposed to go right there in front of the house and blocking their act. Their existing curb cut that goes on North Pleasant Street. So there's a lot of things that have to be rehashed on the applicant's end. And then if they were to come back to us with a with a new permit, you would think that it would be incorporating all of those comments and feedbacks that were given to them.
Okay. Thank you, Mister Wachilla. All right. Are there other comments from members of the board or staff regarding? The um motion to withdraw or the request from the petitioner to withdraw without prejudice? All right, if there are no further comments or questions, um I would entertain a motion. That we approve the request of the petitioner to withdraw this application without prejudice.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Aye.
It's moved and seconded, so now we have discussion on that motion. I think this is the right thing to do. I I don't know how we would get to um approving. I don't know how we'd get to um making this with prejudice, cause I I don't think we can do that on our own. The only way we can effectively do that is is to go through the whole process and deny it. But I think we, if by doing this, we are sending a clear message to the applicant that there are. That not only are there threshold questions of whether this can even be considered, but there are other questions that force us to really examine this application very closely. And those are questions that were mostly raised from the neighbors, also just, I think, public health and safety questions, as well as management. As well as those questions that Rob Wachilla just raised about curb cuts and transportation and a host of other things that I think really are are troublesome. And so I think this gives, this shows, I think this demonstrates. The applicant knows he's got, they have a problem with this this uh project. And I would encourage them to spend the time, if they want to do something in addition, uh do additional work on this property. That they spend time talking with the neighbors, not only about how it's currently managed, but about what they could do in the future. And I think that would make a ton, would bode well for uh this applicant and for the neighborhood. And so on for on those grounds, I think this makes sense. Um but I'd like to hear from other people before we go to a vote. Miss Greenbaum, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to say I very much agree with you. Um I will reluctantly, well, I, but. I think that knocking heads together has worked very well in a couple of other projects, beginning with the one on Pine Street. And Sunset Fearing, and I think they ended up with a much better project and happier neighbors. At least on Pine Street, I haven't heard any complaints lately. And and the project on. In, you know, on Sunset Fearing is turning out to be a very attractive example for what can be done. And so I will relax and and I put in another plug, please, to spend some of that planning grant money that you've gotten. Redo the bylaw. It's now more than fifty years old, it needs to be updated. And we didn't like the form-based code that came in from North Amherst. It was too much like North Alston. I said they took a shoebox off the shop, gave us North Alston, but we really need something that that looks like Amherst. And can to then meanwhile provide places for more housing for people, middle income housing families to send their kids to the school. Anyway, that's the end of my rant.
Thank you, Miss Greenbaum. Any other comments, questions on the motion? If there are no further comments, um the vote occurs on the motion to approve the request. Of the for the applicant, to approve the request to withdraw the application. Z B A F Y twenty twenty three dash twelve, seven ninety eight, eight hundred North Pleasant Street, without prejudice. This requires a roll call vote and requires three votes out of five, um a simple majority. The chair votes aye. Mister Meadows?
Aye.
Mister Henry?
Aye.
Miss Marshall?
Aye.
Miss Greenbaum?
Aye.
The vote is five zero, motion is approved. Um the application is withdrawn without prejudice. I think by by that fact, the other um request you had into us is moot and is um off the table. So your application is is out there, and I do want to um encourage. The applicant, the owners of that property, if they indeed do want to pursue additional uh work on that site. To work with the neighbors to try to get um a better project and to be com- uh aware of what we decide on. And the guidance we're given on the threshold issue of complimentary. And whether you can even have to, even have to duplexes on the same piece of property. There's some pretty big issues there. All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Um we have no other applications or business before us except a general comment period. Uh this is where the public can speak. Uh on any matter not before the board tonight, so if anybody in the public wishes to speak on this, on any issue. Other than the issue that we dealt with tonight, um this is the time to do that. And Rob, I don't see any hands up. We have four people as attendees, but no hands up.
Uh, no hands up, Mister Chairman.
All right, then lastly, we have uh any new business, any business that has not been anticipated in the last forty eight hours. I, you know, Rob, I'd like you to discuss scheduling for the future and uh outreach to members to serve on. On the several panels we have coming up, if you could.
Luckily, the panels are a little bit late in the coming months, with the exception of the four E B project, so um. As of right now, on October twelfth, which is our next meeting, uh we have. The continued public hearing for the Shrewsbury Road Solar Project, uh which a few of you are panelists on. And we also have a new petition for a change of use from a owner occupied duplex to a non-owner occupied duplex. On sixty two Taylor Street. On October nineteenth, we have our first hearing for Valley CDC's four E B projects. Um twenty to forty Ball Lane is the address. It is a nine acre site. They're gonna construct fifteen affordable duplexes. Um essentially creating thirty affordable owner occupied, so they wouldn't be rentals, they would be owner projects. Um sorry, owner um units and. They uh are pretty much all set to go on the nineteenth. The only thing that we have to discuss, Mister Chairman, is. Setting up a schedule for that. So the way the four E Bs work is that they require usually around five to six hearings. And after discussing with with Steve Judge Chairman, um he decided to do those hearings on off Thursdays. As opposed to the normally scheduled, sorry, second and fourth Thursday of every month. So basically, what Steve want to talk about, and I don't know if this is still true, is. I guess who here tonight would be interested in serving on such a panel? And I guess just making you guys aware that this schedule will be developed and eventually shared with all the members. So those of you who are interested in serving on this four D B panel can can indicate as such. And I don't know if I'm missing anything, Steve. Was there anything else you want to touch upon besides?
That's really what I wanted to do is just, is identify the things we have coming up and and let people know that we're gonna. Because we have some, I think, really hearing intensive. and, and let people know that we're gonna, because we have some, I think, really hearing intensive proposals before us, that we're gonna start doing this every week for a while, because we just won't get it done otherwise. And so what I would like to,
Sorry, at least until the forty B is over, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, until the forty B is over. And, and it may not be very controversial, but I'd like to get started on affordable. I'd like to make affordable housing a priority and like to move quickly on it. Cause I think that's really important, especially with the homeownership, uh, twist to it. I think it's really important to do. So what I'd like you to do, members of the board, please let Rob know if you will be available to serve on the, um, alternative, alternate week panels for the forty B. Or if you, if you can have the time for it, if your, if your schedule does not permit it, you've already just baked in the normal times that you, on Thursday nights. But if you're available, please let me know. My inclination is always, I go with the permanent mem, the full members. That's the first shot, they're up full members, we'll try to get them, everyone on board. But I think, uh, I think John Gilbert cannot serve or may not be able to serve on the forty B panel. So there is, if there's a, there might be a place for a, uh, an alternate to help, um, uh, to serve on this panel. Mr. Wachilla.
So the only person who's indicated that they would, would, would be willing to serve is actually Hilda. Hilda emailed me earlier saying that she'd be willing to serve on such a panel. Um, Sarah Marshall said that she would be unable to.
All right.
Well, my hesitation is only that I'm on the ballot in November and I don't know until that happens, what the demands on my time might be.
Exactly.
So we see these hearings going probably until like the end of the year, if they're gonna be on the first and third Thursday. Um, so I guess, you know, board members who are here, and I can reach out to everybody tomorrow, cause that's when I'm gonna start creating the schedule. You know, just let me know if, if you have the time on those off Thursdays to contribute to this. If you don't, that's totally fine. It's just, I'm gonna create the schedule just so everybody has it, so they know what dates to section off for this forty B hearing. Um, yeah.
And see if you can,
I was gonna ask, can, I was gonna ask, can you, can you send the schedule so I can look and, you know?
Yeah, I could do that tomorrow and, um, just so everybody has it.
Mr. Mora.
Okay, just wanted to mention that, you know, these forty B projects are really interesting, uh, and something different than what the board normally does. Uh, and there's another one coming, so right behind it. So anyone who misses the opportunity, uh, you know, there's a seventy unit project, uh, on the town-owned properties on Belcher Town Road in the East Street School, uh, being proposed by Wayfinders that, you know, looks like it's about a couple of months behind the Valley CDC project. So there'll be, there'll be more, uh, opportunities to review comp permits.
And when he means right after, he means in sometime in the spring is when they'd most likely come before the board. Because Valley submitted their P E L, which is their pub, general public comment period back in this past spring. And now they're coming before us in, um, October. So generally, there's like a, a big kind of time gap in this, uh, forty B process before they can actually get to the hearing.
But what it really means is that you have great opportunities to sit in more hearings. And, and this time, I think you'll be doing some really good work. Because I think both of these, as represented so far, show great promise. And, um, it's actually, I think, they're, they really show great promise to, to provide housing in the town that we desperately need. Um, Hilda?
No.
Ms. Greenbaum, I don't need to just,
You can call me whatever you want. Um, no, I just wanted to say, the reason I applied to be an associate member of the, of the zoning board is because I knew all these hearings were coming up and I've been there, done that many times. And so I thought you needed help, like, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you. We do. All right, Rob, you'll send out, send out tomorrow, uh, the hearing schedule. Let people respond. Um, then you and I will talk about how we set up panels going forward for the, these, this and the solar. Our solar is already set up, but for this, for the, uh, the alternate weeks, okay?
Sounds good.
Do people have any other new business, any questions, anything else you wish to discuss, um, at this time? Administrative matters or, or anything? Okay. Well, and if nothing else, we can move to adjournment and it's only seven thirty. So you have, you have some time, um, for yourself tonight on a Thursday night. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded that we adjourned. This is not debatable, but does require a roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Ms. Greenbaum.
Aye.
Motion is, carries, the vote is unanimous, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Uh, thanks for your work tonight and, and for all the consideration you gave to the issues we had to discuss.